Good evening, everybody. You are now, I was going to say witnessing, but watching the Halifax Port of Selectments Meeting, which is an odd week meeting specifically to cover a couple of items. But I just want to remind you that we are, in fact, still being filmed by Area 58 Community Access Television, available on Channel 15 if you have Comcast. And we're also on, we're going to be on YouTube, and apparently, I think, we're all set up so that we're being zoomed as well. So I would like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
What I feel like to me is salute flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to take this opportunity at the onset of the meeting to just kind of give everybody a little description of what we're going to do tonight. We're not going to do typical business. What we want to discuss tonight is some budget items for the upcoming town meeting, and go over the warrant articles. Subsequent to that, we are going to go into executive session for some contractual negotiations, and when we come out of the executive session, we will not be conducting any further business. So we're going to start off with some discussion about our budget, and I'm going to turn it over to our town administrator, Mr. Sealy.
And also Sandy Nolan is here, though she's not up by a mic, but in case she wants to, she can always go to a mic and supplement any information.
Cindy, you want to move up? That was him putting you on the spot, not me. Just wanted to be clear.
Well, she's been a regular at the Finance Committee meetings also, so she may have remembered something I'm going to miss. But basically, the Finance Committee, for the most part, has gone through all the line items. There were a lot of line items where they've not made at least final recommendations as far as the warrant, because they are still working on the question of how much money is going to be available for increases in the line items. The principal two line items that they have to make decisions about are the elementary school and the assessment for Silver Lake. Once they do that, they'll have a much better idea of how much money is available for any increases in other line items, and then, for instance, other issues such as a general wage increase or additional hours for departments and such. Things are very tight. Certainly, the Finance Committee cannot honor all the requests that came in from all the departments, and that's one of the reasons that they're still working on the budget at this point, looking at Silver Lake and looking at Halifax Elementary, because obviously, between the two of them, they are a significant portion of the total budget for the operations of the town. They have two more meetings left. One is on Wednesday, one is next Monday before the warrant goes to press. Sandy has been doing a great job of advising them as to what revenues are available, monitoring what our local receipts are like, which can vary. The state aid number is known, at least until the House budget comes out next month, and our property taxes will be what they are, given Proposition 2 and 1/2, and given the commitment by the Finance Committee to make sure that the town does not levy up all the way to its limit, but instead leaves about $300,000 untaxed every year. Ultimately, of course, town meeting will make the decisions, no matter what the Finance Committee recommends, but it's the Finance Committee's responsibility, in fact, to come to town meeting with a series of recommendations. Those recommendations might change between next week and town meeting, because the governor's budget may be different than the House budget. Our local receipt numbers will continue to come in. We'll see whether those can be adjusted at all, but the amounts probably are not going to be material versus the amount of money that's being requested, in the sense of tens of thousands of dollars versus hundreds of thousands of dollars. So whatever the Finance Committee recommends, let's say as of April 5th, may not end up being what's recommended come May 10th, but that information will be provided as they make changes in any recommendations. But I think it's certain that all or most departments are not going to be getting what they were asking for, given the tightness of the budget. Sandy, is there anything?
That just thought of a second.
All right. Those were my conclusions in the meetings that I attended as well. That's the reality. All right, if we've talked about that a little bit, I think probably what we should do is just move right on to the warrant articles.
Right. The main reason for tonight's meeting is to review the warrant in its current form. We wanted to make sure that given, since the board's not meeting on a regular basis until April 13th, and we're going to print next week, I wanted to make sure the board was aware of what articles were on the warrant. They had questions at this point. We had an ability to ask them before we went to press, and also if they felt there was something missing from the warrant, we still have a number of days to go before the warrant's printed. The board as a whole is very familiar with the structure of the warrant, so in some cases, I'm going to just basically, you know, very, very quickly go over some of the articles without commentary, simply because the board has seen many of these before. As we get into the capital budget articles and such, there might be a bit of more explanation. Article 1 is always the here, the reports of town officials and committees. Article 2 will be the wage and personnel amendments. I expect that we may not have a full set by next Wednesday, in that there are subjects that we're still doing work on gathering data, but I will put in, the plan would be to put in Article 2, the subjects that we are likely going to be discussing at town meeting, even if there's not a specific recommendation. For Article 3 is the elected official salaries. That's waiting for the Finance Committee, and that will be, at this point, I would expect if they make any changes, I have to print in the 2021 figures, but for 2122, generally they vote an increase in those salaries if there's a general wage increase for wage and personnel employees. Since they've not made a decision about the wage and personnel employees, they haven't made a recommendation for the salaries either. Article 4 will be the operating budget. Article 5 is the traditional list of revolving funds. These are not funds where taxes are paid. These are funds where fees are collected, and then for specific purposes, those money is collected, is then used for those purposes by various departments with various limits. Article 6 is a reserve fund. Traditionally, we get $75,000 set aside for the general fund, which goes to the Finance Committee, and then $50,000 is set for Water Department in case of any emergencies. That is money coming from the Water Department, but again, set aside, and decisions are made by the Finance Committee of whether to release any of that money. Articles 7 through 13 are ones for contracts, both for the unions and for personnel, specific contracts for fire and police chiefs. None of these right now have recommendations, as in fact, we're still negotiating or even just starting to negotiate fiscal '22 requests from the unions for collective bargaining. These articles will remain on the warrant, even if we have not reached an agreement by next week. Traditionally, we bring these to town meeting, and so if by the first week of May, an agreement's been reached, then the board select will present these articles to the Finance Committee in the town meeting with their recommendation. If we have not reached agreement, we do not appropriate money for those articles, for those contracts. Once they get settled, if they don't get settled by the first week of May, let's say it's June, let's say it's August, then in a future town meeting, there'll be a similar article to fund that contract. You'll see that, in fact, for the special town meeting later on, that we're still negotiating contracts for fiscal '21. Then we get into the various appropriation articles. A number of them are ones that we see every year. A1 is the $150 for the county co-op extension service. A2 is the Chapter 90 funds. We're waiting for the state legislation to pass so we can assign a chapter number to Article 8.2. We know the amount is $267,685. We're in the Highway Department. Highway Surveyor would make the decisions on how money, that money would be spent. But if the legislature has not approved the necessary bonding bill by that date, May 10th, we'll pass over this article and bring it back at a future town meeting. A3 is the, we traditionally have an article for general highway maintenance for the larger projects. For a number of years, we've been funding this at $150,000. The Capital Plan Committee, Highway Surveyor, and Finance Committee had discussed this, and everybody had agreed that for several years, there was a need to increase this amount. And given what we had available in free cash this year, and given the need of the road system right now, everyone thought that we needed to increase this amount, and now it's $300,000 rather than the usual $150,000. Article A4 is a request from the Highway Surveyor for a bond for $4 million for really major road work. Obviously, as most residents know, a number of roads in Halifax are substandard, and it does unfortunately take a large amount of money to bring them up, even without any engineering costs or such. Steve is still trying to decide whether he wants this article brought to town meeting. I did, I've been checking with him to see whether he wants it, and also the necessity would be if we bonded it, we would need a debt exclusion, because we don't have money in a regular reason appropriate to fund the necessary bonding costs. At this point, he's not made, you know, his final feeling's known about the article or the bonding or debt exclusion.
For the debt exclusion, we'd have to put something on the ballot?
Yes.
When is the drop dead?
It's now, basically. I mean, you could have, you know, I've asked him again, the three of you could have a special meeting before we went to press, but it's early next week, because Barb Gainer, the town clerk, when she's printing the ballots, needs to know whether there's going to be ballot question, and she's worked it backwards. You know, she knows, she doesn't have to print the ballot before the candidates are known, but it's going to be during early April, and she needs, she needs to get that in place.
So we need to decide.
I'll check, sorry.
So should we, you want to take a tentative vote on this to put it on the ballot?
I think we wait.
I can, you know, because I don't have, the thing is, I don't have, I don't have all the wording probably necessary, because I don't know if he wants to be specific about roads or what he wants to do. What word he wants to use for the $4 million?
Yeah, because when I've spoken to him, he was very nebulous. He was talking about in total, but he didn't get specific, and I think we need to have that spelled out, and find out if he's really going to pursue this or not.
So we'd have to have another meeting next week with a, where he'd know what he'd be looking at?
Yeah, I mean, five or 10 minutes would take care. If he wants to go with it, then I can prepare the vote. You'll still have to make a decision whether it's a good thing or not, but...
Yeah, but it's better to have a vote on when you got all the information, and doesn't have to redo it again.
Okay. Okay. A5 is, the Building and Facility Needs Committee is looking at the possibility of purchasing land between Carver, Plymouth in South Streets, and also on the, or land that abuts Plymouth Street, between the Carver Street Plymouth Street intersection and the South Street Plymouth Street intersection. This is for future building needs. We have gone out to bid once. We did not get bids in. We've gone out to bid again. There's a possibility we'll have a bid in before, by the end of the month, in which case then the Building Committee, the Building Facility Needs Committee, not the Municipal and School Building Committee, and the board would have to decide whether they want to pursue that and go after money from the town for that. It would have to come probably out of stabilization or free cash. Those would be the only two places, depending on the amount of money that the person proposing purchase, the town purchasing the property, would be asking for.
Are we going to put the language in and pass over if it doesn't?
Right. Yeah, I mean, the like, the article, I mean, I think by the time we, certainly by the time we go to town meeting, we'll know one where the other.
Right.
A6 is for the annual amount for the assessor's recertification account. This is going to be the last time, I think, Sandy, we're going to see it this way.
That's what we're talking about. This is the last time that it would be as an article, and next year, we will build it into the actual expense account. It would then become a reason appropriate with that.
Right. Because they've been spending the money each year on this work, so instead of what had been happening, they were saving it up each year for three years, and then spending it all once the project goes on every year. So it would be now a reason appropriate article.
One of the reasons why I suggested it was because the bill is coming in now yearly. It used to be we would get billed once every three years, but now because the bill is coming in yearly, it could be put into the expense account. We put it in an article because we could then save the money up for three years for when the bill came in and have that larger amount to pay, but I was told that the bill is coming in now yearly.
To guarantee the price, and that's...
Right. So it makes sense to put it in the budget.
A7, Sandy, am I correct that we're still...
A7 is being pulled.
Okay, so let's pull.
Yep. And A8 is being pulled.
That's why I had that cross through. So A9 is the traditional purchase of two vehicles for the police department. The change here is that they will be hybrid vehicles, so they're a little more expensive than previous years, for the idea that maintaining the vehicles will be less expensive, but also spending as much money on gasoline and such, so it should be some operating cost savings despite the additional capital costs.
Yeah, especially when they're, when they're at idle, that should be significant.
A10 is a new copy machine for the police department for $5,000. A11 is, we're skipping over A11, it's pulled. A12 is the, we ever, every other year, we need to perform what's an actuarial study on what's called the post-employment benefits or other post-employment benefits, also called OPEB. For the most part, these are expenses that the town is liable for, for health insurance for retired employees, and we need to include what our liability is on our balance sheets. But to do that, we need to be an actuarial study that shows how many people would be eligible, how many people, how long they're planning, that actuarial, how long they plan on living, et cetera, so that way it determines our liability.
Well, I, for one, can go down for planning on living longer than, I thought I'd mentioned that.
A12 is being pulled. A14, sorry, A12's not being pulled.
A13.
A13 is being pulled. There's a dup, A14 is for resealing the parking lot at the Halifax Elementary School. A15's being pulled. A16 is for the kitchen flooring, to replace it at the Halifax Elementary School for $30,000. Then additional hallway flooring for $12,000, and Article 17, again, the Halifax Elementary School. Article A18, I had as a access road, and Sandy talked about, she put in a better description, which is to install and extend pedestrian pathways from and around the elementary school.
That's to connect the landing and create a walkway, right?
Right, and then...
Is that a good description?
Yeah, and to give an ADA path down to the playground.
I'll mention that then. A19 is to install central air conditioning in the tech lab in Halifax Elementary School. That's $18,000. The correct figure on A20 is $105,000, not $110,000. This is for the town share for the reconstruction of the tennis courts at Silver Lake Regional School District. A21 is for repair, possible repair and reconstruction, replacement of the fences at the Bond Field at the police station. I know that Dick Steele is looking to see if he can get funds from other sources, but this would be the gross amount, and if he knows beforehand, before town meeting, whether we can be a timeout, and then we'll beat the article, we'll say that. If he needs less than that, we can adjust that. Do you want to take a break?
Yeah, please. All right. We're going to take a five or 10 minute recess here, folks, and we'll be back.
Now we're going to, A22's being pulled. A23, well, let me go back to A22 for a minute. Traditionally, we get petition articles for support for a contract with the South Coastal County's Legal Services, and then also for South Shore Resource and Advocacy Center. With COVID, it was more difficult, I'm sure, for people to gather signatures, and we did that, in fact, get petition articles for either of those. I then contacted both groups, and I did hear back from the South Shore Resource and Advocacy Center, but not from Legal Services. And South Shore Advocacy Center would appreciate it if the board would propose the article in place of the petition article. I did not hear back from Legal Services. I can leave A22 on there in case, you know, in the meantime, they come back and ask for something similar. What's the board's pleasure on both of those?
Should we get a motion, or at least put them on the warrant?
Some move to put the vote on.
Yeah, I usually make the presentation on those, and they're usually pretty good, but this has been unusual circumstances this year.
Yeah, we'll get it on the warrant, and the town meeting can dispose.
Is that a second, Troy?
This is a second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Unanimous, thank you.
A24 is in case at the end of the evening, we have any money available that can be placed in the stabilization fund. That would be a motion to do that. A25 is the article that would be for the money that we receive from Uber and Lyft trips. Unfortunately, the timing doesn't work in our favor right now. We only, we get to know what the amount is in June. Now, we're having town meeting in May, so we can't appropriate the money in May. And Sandy and I have been in touch with the Division of Local Services. That's basically what it is. When we did it last year, we had the meeting in September, so we could do it in September.
Charlie, was this pulled?
Well, I'm going to pull it, because we don't, we can't act on it. We don't know what the money amount will be. But if we have a special town meeting after June, we can do it then. The other thing is the governor's budget proposal includes a change in how communities with smaller amounts of money that are coming in can deal with this, which would eliminate probably the headache that we have, but we can't do it right now. A26, we're being pulled. A27?
A26 is not being pulled.
Okay, A26, well, I thought it was that way.
I don't believe it was anyways. Charlie, I don't have it marked that way.
No, okay. Well, then it's not being pulled. And so, but A27, is that a fair description? That it's a, well, A26 would be for the permitting system. E27 would be for document management. I guess it's not e-permitting.
All right. So A26 is the document management system.
Okay.
And that's what allows us to do the e-permitting and the digitalization.
Wait, wait, that's A27.
I know, the descriptions are messed up. That's the way it was supposed to be written. The $32,000 is for the e-permitting, which is also the document management.
Okay.
A27 was for the work order, the work order asset management system.
Yeah, okay.
And that was at $24,000.
Is that, that's being pulled, right?
I, well, that is not being recommended by the Finance Committee, but I don't know whether you want to pull it or not. That's up to you.
Okay, well, let's do this. A26 is the document management, e-permitting, and digitalization.
Yes.
A27 is the work order. We'll leave both on the warrant, and we'll see where things go.
We'll write the descriptions by the...
But the amounts are correct, 32 and 24?
That's what I have, yes.
Okay. A28 was a possible electronic payroll system. We're, that's being pulled. We aren't going to set aside a sum of money for COVID under A29 in addition to anything we've already spent. So A29's being pulled. A30 is $135,000 for a new backhoe for the Highway Department. A31 is $85,000 for an F-550 diesel equipment hook lift, the dump body sander and plow for the Highway Department. A32 is $29,000 for replacing windows at Hope's Tavern. A33 is to upgrade the alarm systems at Town Hall, the Highway Bond, and Recycling Center for 17.5. A34 would be to appropriate additional money above and beyond $35,000, was approved a couple of years ago, for replacement, repair, replacement of the handicap ramp at Town Hall. The plan right now is to be able to go out to bid and get bids in hand by town meeting, so we'll have an amount that we can bring to town meeting. And the reason we're doing this is the costs are higher than we anticipated two years ago. A35 is, it would be to crack seal, repave, and restrike the Town Hall parking lot. I'm waiting for figures from the Building Committee for that. A36 is for repair, replacing the roof at the Holmes Public Library for $11,000. A37 is for $90,000 to replace the windows at the Halifax Town Hall. And both with that and with the Council on Aging, I know for most homeowners, these would seem to be extraordinary large amounts, but the buildings are not, don't have standard windows, in the sense we have to have custom windows done for both buildings. So that's why there's an additional expense. Also during the pandemic, even before the pandemic, but even more so during the pandemic, the cost for materials such as these, as windows, have gone up by material amounts, so they're much higher than...
No pun intended?
Yeah. Charlie?
Yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's a chance of getting some of this money back through Green Communities?
Yes. But we'll have this money available if that doesn't work out.
Right.
A38 is for $73,000 to purchase a new Council on Aging van. A39 was a duplicate of A38, so obviously that's being pulled. A40 is to hold a series of personnel workshops for department heads. What we have is, you know, department heads are very familiar with the work in their own departments. They're not as familiar about, for instance, proper ways of hiring people, or working with employees, or, you know, doing disciplinary issues and things like that. And the idea would be to hold a series of workshops for department heads here in Halifax. That's been something that's been talked about for several years now, and this would be an attempt, we've tried to get grant money and such, that hasn't worked. It's not going to be the Municipal and School Building Committee, however, that's stuck asking for that, so...
So that would be open to more than that committee, right?
Right, yes. It's for, it's all town department heads, yeah. A41 I can pull. The idea here is this natural gas line at Town Hall. We're, not this year, but maybe next year, we may be applying for a Green Communities grant for a new boiler downstairs. It would be a gas boiler or furnace. We need a gas line, though, to bring the gas in, and Green Communities won't fund that. So I don't have a number. I haven't talked to Scott McTernan yet about trying even to get an estimate as to the cost, or what company would do that work. I'm happy to pull this. We don't have a number for it, but at least this to give you a heads up that if we want to go, if we ever wanted to get a new board gas boiler here to replace the oil burner, we're going to need to, in fact, get a gas line in.
Yeah, depending on the burner itself, sometimes you can do convergence, so, but anyway, that's something they can look at.
Would the board want me to keep this on, or do you want to have it deleted?
Is it definitely not going to happen this year?
Well, we're not going to get a new boiler this year, yes.
But the, I think the problem is that if you want to do it next year...
You have to have a gas line in place.
You have to have the line in before November, and you have to go through all the work orders.
Exactly. And we should at least get a price or an estimate.
Okay, so let me leave it on, let me see what...
Yeah, we can always pass over it at town meeting if we need to.
I mean, how much lead time do you need to prepare all the necessary work?
Well, we wouldn't, we probably wouldn't get, if we got another Green Communities grant next spring, or, well, actually, the way they, it takes a while. So it's summer or fall, even for this year, in the sense of, we have a lot of projects already online, so we wouldn't be doing the boiler even if we had a gas line in. But if we were doing a boiler project, it probably won't be until the fall of '22. So, but, so we have plenty of time. It's a matter of getting, finding out the quote, and then making a decision at town meeting, getting everything hooked up short of replacing the boiler.
Yeah. Yeah, it just puts us in a position to take advantage. I think, I think we leave it in, and then...
Yeah, because if they can get the line in this year, we're much better than, we're ready to go next year, and we missed the window.
Exactly, and the gas companies are notoriously late anyway, so...
A42, there's a discussion about getting a generator for Town Hall. We don't need that. A43 is to purchase three, if you could pull, I'm going to pull that if the board's okay. There's, I'm not going to get everything together, get everything lined up in time for town meeting. I'll just have to try again at a future town meeting. That was a duplicate under A44. A45 is to purchase three new computers for the library, two for the public, one for the staff, for $2,500. Then these are articles that came in late, and it's up to the board to make a decision whether to include them on the warrant. whether to include them on the warrant. I think most of them could be included under the special if the board wanted to, but I really don't see the point. A forty-six would be to appropriate sixty-five hundred to install an OSHA-required mezzanine gate at the highway barn. For folks who haven't been to the barn, they actually have a mezzanine around the perimeter of the main structure. I mean, we need a gate up there to prevent people from falling. Is it okay with the board that that article will stay on the warrant?
Make a motion to put that one in.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that one's necessary, because if we did have an event, then it would look even worse for us if we had the opportunity to fix it and didn't.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, you're saying yes, fine. A forty-seven is the additional money to continue the work on purchasing and installing the overhead doors at the highway barn. I'm waiting for Scott to give me a quote for that, but if the board would approve putting that on the warrant, make a motion to.
Second, and all those in favor? All right, unanimous.
A forty-eight, the auditors have recommended that we do a fund, a fraud risk assessment. This is part of the audit work they do. They come up with a list of recommendations that the town implement. One of which is a fraud risk assessment. I have an RFP from another community. My hope is that I will get bids in hand by town meeting, so that we'll be able to implement this recommendation from the auditors. Would the board approve adding that one there?
Some move?
Second, all those in favor? All right, unanimous.
A forty-nine is a request from the treasure collector for twenty-five thousand to be added to the unemployment compensation fund.
Some move?
Second, all those in favor?
All right. Silver Lake Regional School Committee requested thirty-six thousand to support a part-time school resource officer for the Silver Lake Middle School. This is the same article that was proposed last year.
I'll accuse myself as a quota selection, because I'll probably be presenting this article. But again, this is the same discussion that took place last night, where if you want to add it to the operating budget, you can put a line under Silver Lake, so it's on the operating, you know, Article Four and not as an article. If the Finance Committee does that, then you wouldn't need the article.
I think we've been arguing off, at least I have, that it should be in the operating budget and not outside the budget.
If it's going to be an annual thing, it should be in the operating budget, you know?
So, the discussion was whether or not, and it goes back to that meeting that happened a few years ago, whether or not that Silver Lake has the agreement with Kingston or the towns have the agreement with Kingston. And the towns having an agreement with Kingston's was what was copied from what I think was old Rochester did, so that's why it's asked to be continued as well. It's actually cheaper for the town of Halifax this way than it is to pay for the full-time and the part-time.
So, you're saying that your recommendation would be to do it via the article?
Either you do the thirty-six thousand by the article, or you do a sub under the Silver Lake line in the operating budget. You put SRO there.
So, we have, for instance, we have the assessment for the operating budget, but also for the debt exclusion.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be specific for the SRO.
Yeah.
All right, that makes sense.
So, you want to put it on Article Four?
I mean, I don't think it matters, obviously, in terms of the budget, it's a wash.
It's how we do it.
Because I would have been recommending to take it out of rates and appropriate anyways, so, yeah, I can do that. I can add it, yeah.
And I'll tell the, I'll consult with the Finance Committee and also officially tell Jill, that's the plan. A fifty-one, Tom Schindler and the Parks Commission had asked me about putting an article on for repair replacement of fence at the Lingan Street Beach. He said something, it might be twelve thousand, but he needs to go out and get updated quotes, so I put in our tentative number fifteen, because if the board was interested in doing this, we could put it on the town meeting warrant, some of.
You get a second? I'm building it, but. Does the fence really need to be replaced every day?
Well, I think Tom thinks it needs to be replaced. I mean, I don't know how long it's been up there, but he saw me earlier this month and asked me about the possibility of putting an article on. I think he's the only commissioner on the Parks Commission right now.
All right, I'll second it. Moved and seconded, all those in favor? All right, unanimous.
The PA system is simply because what we have right now is only a four channel, and if we continue meeting in here, for instance, and we want mics and people to be heard with loudspeakers, we need to have an upgrade at least to eight. For instance, I would work with Caesar and with Scott probably to get pricing on a new PA system that would work here at least, if that's agreeable to the board. Some move?
Yeah, I'd be seconding to do it. Moved and seconded, all those in favor? All right.
Article fifty, A three fifty-three is a carryover from last year. I don't know if I'm going to have enough time between now and town meeting. I wasn't able to verify the numbers. I'm not saying they're wrong, and I, this is a situation where the housing authority was paying some of the town share for assessment for employees that were actually salary employees over in Halifax. They worked both for the authority and for Halifax, but they were being charged the entire amount rather than just the housing authority amount. If you want to leave it on, I'll try and see what I can get done next month so that I can verify the figures, if you want me to skip it.
Yeah, I think that was the issue the last time this came.
Yes.
You didn't have any verification of what exactly happened.
They've been trying, I mean, I couldn't, in good justice, go to town meeting and simply take the word of the retirement system and the housing authority and want to.
But I think we have to do our due diligence, and I agree with you.
Do they have credible information that says that they paid it out?
Well, they had information in the spreadsheet showing, but the figures didn't seem to come to this number. That's why I was questioning it.
So, is this the, will this pay up a liability that they're carrying forward, like a normal cost along with what we previously?
No, it's more that we were supposed to be billed for this assessment rather than the housing authority. The housing authority got billed this assessment. We're not sending money to the retirement system. We're in essence refunding the housing authority.
For money they sent.
The overage that was charged by the retirement system. The retirement system isn't going to give them back the money and then charge us.
I think I would recommend leaving it on there, and if you have time to deal with it, otherwise just pass it over.
Again, you can pass over, I agree.
F-one is the deal, we've got the solar property on River Street, where an agreement, it was still being negotiated, it wasn't finalized, and so I needed to leave this on here, at least up to the time a few days ago, to allow the possibility that the assessors in the select will bring the final pilot agreement to the town meeting for approval. The climate change bill that got passed included verbiage that clarified exactly how solar fields could be taxed, which changes the dynamics of dealing with pilot agreements. The legislation, however, doesn't go into effect until June, so.
We're going to have to wait.
Right, so, I don't see, unless the board feels there's a need, I can leave this out of here. I guess the only possibility would be that the owners of the solar field would come back to the assessors in the next few weeks and say, hey, let's make a deal. And the assessors would say, okay, and then there's a deal, and it's brought to town meeting.
Putting on the other half.
Yeah.
It's not likely to happen, but I think we leave it on there and the possibility, for the possibility that it could happen. We've been waiting patiently for this bill to go through, and thankfully it did, because it's been such a mess statewide as to how these things are treated, based on an antiquated law that has absolutely no application in my mind, but, but yes, anyway, to make a long story short, I think we leave it on. We pass over if we don't have anything in place. I'll second that. All those in favor? All right.
The next article is an update for the floodplain district. This is due to FEMA's requirements. It goes on for, I think, nine to 10 pages. I'm not going to go through it.
That's good.
The planning board is holding a public hearing on Thursday. They're having someone from the state on the meeting to discuss if people have questions, but it's a requirement for the town to maintain eligibility for the property owners for floodplain insurance.
I would highly recommend to the residents, anybody who is even close to any water or has had issues with floodplains in the past, to pay some attention to this, because it doesn't become a problem for them until it's a problem. So, I would highly recommend that they maybe participate or at least view some film on that particular meeting. I think it would be in your best interests.
Article B-two is a petition article to basically eliminate the sale of, AKA NIPS, but bottles of liquor or containers of liquor less than or equal to 100 millimeters within the town of Halifax. I know Chelsea had voted this a few years ago. I think other communities either have voted it recently or are thinking of doing that, but it's a petition article, and we'll see what happens at town meeting. B-three similarly is another petition article. This one would increase the number of members on the board select from the current three to five. If it was passed, it would then go to the state legislature as a home rule petition. B-four is that Silver Lake would like to see the town approve allowing, setting up a stabilization fund for Silver Lake. Obviously, we would then start having to put money into it, because they'd be looking for money above and beyond the assessment. The money that went into the stabilization fund could then be used by Silver Lake on any projects that qualified. They would, they would go back to the town for approval. The town voted on this several times already and voted down on each occasion, but Silver Lake asked for this article being placed on this year's warrant. I'm working with town council on B-five for a small amendment to clear up some language that was pointed out by the AG's office about the illicit discharge bylaw that was passed last year. I'll add that wording for the warrant to do with the enforcement mechanism, exactly how fines are issued under that bylaw.
Discharge for the stormwater?
Yes. C-one was from the Highway Surveyor, so Steve is working on that Pine Street Bridge project as part of it. He may need to get easements and such, and have the town acquire those easements, so he needed this verbiage in the article to do that. Franklin Street Solar Project, I know the assessors have been going back and forth a little bit with town council, that because of a street address change, whether there was a necessity for, you know, revised pilot, probably wouldn't revise the terms, it might just replace the identification information at the beginning. I don't know if there's a need for that on here or not, though. Do you want me to check with Mary, Holly, one more time?
I think it got taken care of.
Okay, I'll check.
I'm confident it got taken care of, but I'll just check anyway.
And then there'll be the election article.
Okay.
So, there's one more page, which is a special town meeting warrant.
Yep.
The articles there, the first three are for union article bargaining negotiations for contracts, which we had not finished by the time of the September meeting back nine months ago. So, we, if we have contracts ready to be approved by the town, then we'll bring funding in for Articles One, Two and Three, which are for the sergeants, the patrol officers and the mixed unit.
Yep.
A-four is a situation where if for some reason we had employees.
Scott, we can hear feedback from one of the phones? Excuse me?
I'm just muted then.
Okay.
Article Four, if we have a situation where we had employees who were in unions on July 1st of 2020, who by town meeting are no longer members of unions, they should be classified as wage and personnel employees for fiscal twenty-one and should, in fact, get the 1.6% increase that the wage and personnel employees received. That's sort of in case of emergency, great glass article, but I'm not sure what we need to use it, but to be fair and equitable to those employees if that situation arises, I want to have that article available.
Yep.
And Article Five is for my pond, some pond work. We're going to be doing the basic weed eradication, I'm hoping by the early May, and then we're going to be doing, we don't have enough money to do everything, so that we have money available right now. The article would be then to fund the necessary money for the alumina sulfide treatment over in both ponds to reduce the amount of, well, it's to bind the phosphorus and therefore reduce the amount of phosphorus that's available for nutrients in the ponds, along with any other studies or work that need to be done in connection with those projects.
Now, are they chopping the grass or are they?
The, at least for this spring, it is going to be, they're going to be using a herbicide. It's not a weed whacker. It's going to be an herbicide.
That fall within the range of safety? This is going to be used upon, right?
No, no, it won't. The concentrations are low enough that other wildlife and plant life shouldn't be affected. And that's the warrant. I don't know if I'm missing anything the board thought was going to be on here, or if the board had any other questions about the warrant.
I'm good for now with the changes we talked about. I'll give you another quick look at it after it's put together.
And I'm not going to press until probably late next week. Finance Committee will continue its work tomorrow, will continue its work on Monday, and then Sandy, Sandy will work with Pam, make sure our final numbers are in there. Again, subject to changes that always occur between the beginning of April and when town meeting arrives. Sandy, can you send a copy of the spreadsheet?
All right, we've gotten through the articles. I think the only business that we have left is to go into executive session.
And this would be for sergeants, patrol officers, firefighters, highway, the mixed unit, the police chief, the fire chief, as discussing these negotiations in public such would be detrimental to the town's negotiating position.
Nice work, Charlie, and I spent a lot of time trying to memorize that, too. All right.
Some move?
Do I have a second? Mr. Garin?
Yeah.
Andrew?
Yes.
Mr. Millius?
Yes, thanks, Sandy.
Unanimous. Thank you, everyone.